I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you would, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Alderman Osteen.
Here.
Alderman Rose.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Excuse me, here.
Alderman Schuman.
Here.
Alderman Becker.
Here.
Mary Harmison.
Here. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off with the Citizens Communication. This is a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Visitors attending via online will be in listen-only mode. Any questions or comments for the mayor and board may be sent to the city clerk at T B E R R E T H at OsageBeach.org no later than 10:00 a.m. on the board meeting day, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the Citizens Communications section of the agenda. The Board of Aldermen will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will it respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and board of Aldermen welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here in person who would like to address the board this evening? All right, if you would, one at a time, please come on up and sign in, and you'll have three minutes.
I'll just sign in, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Keith Cook, and here with Angie Berger and my wife Lisa, we're from Alona Point, and Angie and I represent the Alona Point Homeowners Association. And first of all, Lisa and I have been here, we've had a home here almost 20 years, but we just moved here full-time from Illinois. We escaped Illinois. This is my list of complaints about Osage Beach. We're very happy here.
Very good, thank you.
And we thank you guys for your time, because I know a lot of these are fairly thankless jobs, and appreciate the chance to speak. The only thing we had, and I'll just read, and I'll give you guys a copy of that, that we were wanting to start a dialogue with the city. And I said, "At our last homeowners' meeting in October, our members in attendance voted unanimously," excuse me, "to petition the city of Osage Beach to take over road maintenance." We have a private road, Alona Point. I said, "Our road has been the responsibility of the Alona Point Homeowners Association for many years. However, for years, we've had two homes that utilize our road and are not members, and so we have no way to assess them and do not contribute to road maintenance." Now, two homes in the Shooter 21 subdivision are utilizing our road, too. They've left a hole in that fence there when they built that subdivision, that wall, and they've directed their driveways. They're now using our private road as well and not part of our HOA. One has published his address already via numbered board attached to the tree outside of Shooter's there. I can blow up the number, but he has his house number on there. I said, "So with 25% of our users of our road now not contributing, we feel it's time the city take over the maintenance duties." I said, "As taxpayers, we've had this responsibility for years, although we reside within the city limits." I said, "Now we have additional burdens with non-paying residents utilizing the road and additional wear and tear associated with the traffic. Construction vehicles for shooters routinely use our road to turn their vehicles, and countless package-delivery vehicles do as well. We don't wish to block those people's drives. We think a city maintenance responsibility would benefit all." And additionally, we have now four with no restrictions on the short-term rental of homes and the residences in Osage Beach. We have four of the 10 homes now back there, now VRBO or Airbnb homes. So we have a lot more traffic with that. And what we'd really like, I think would benefit as well, is with traffic management and if the police have to issue any citations, not having that being a private road, I think, would really, really ease any kind of conflicts they have there. Because I know sometimes police agencies are somewhat reluctant to try to manage a private road.
Okay, keep going if you'd like, yes, thank you. Do you have anything more you'd like to say?
What I'm saying.
Would you, do you have anything more you'd like to say?
No, I pretty much read everything that we had in there, but we'd like to start that discussion with the city about.
And you have information you're going to leave with your contact information on it?
On the road, I have the letter that I wrote that I can leave with you with contact information.
Perfect.
Yes, we'll definitely do that.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can leave it with Mr. Welty right there.
Okay, I have a different copy.
Okay.
Mayor, can we ask him what the name of the road is?
What's the name of the road again, please?
Alona Point.
Alona Point.
Thank you.
And actually, that kind of terminates as Grand Port. It's like a little bit.
Very good. All right. Thank you. And did you want to speak as well, ma'am?
No, I'm good.
Here you go.
I'll be for support.
All right, well, is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to respond to them real quickly. I hope you stay till the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Because the last item on our agenda has to deal with private roads and stuff, so it'd be, it'd be very educational for you to understand.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure, a lot of times, people at the beginning leave and they miss out on stuff, so that's all.
Very good, all right, thank you.
And then after the meeting, I can grab a copy of that from you guys.
Okay.
And unless there's some surprise, it should not be extremely long tonight, though. All right, moving on. If the board so desires, the consent agenda may be approved by a single motion. Has the board had a chance to look at the minutes in the bills list? And if so, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ruckers. Second, Alderman Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion and agenda is approved. All right, we have only, it looks like, five items of new business today. We have no unfinished business. The first bill is Bill 22-84, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Don Schneider Company Incorporated for the Amy Lane Roadway and Case Road driveway improvement project for an amount not to exceed $184,010. This is the first reading. Assistant City Administrator Mike Welty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. The bid opening for this project was back in late October. The city did receive four bids for this project, and the bid tab is attached. Don Schneider excavating was the low bid. We have worked with the Spender recently on the Greenwood Circle drainage issue, but we've never really done any work with them, roadway work with them. So I did check their references. They've done a lot of road work in Jefferson City. All of their references came back fine, so I feel pretty comfortable with moving forward with them. This project is made up of two separate projects. The Case Road project at $49,763, that project was budgeted at $50,000, so that project came in just under budget. The other project is the Amy Lane project. That is a project that we partner with the Special Road District on, and it is a project where we handle the engineering and they handle the construction. We have it budgeted at $78,000 in our budget, but there was an update to that done over the summer, and that was already been approved by the Special Road District at $128,394. The low bid came in at $134,247. I do still need to go to the next Special Road District meeting to get approval from them to cover the difference there. But my initial conversations with some of the board members, they have indicated that there's not going to be a problem with that. So before the second reading happens, if this is approved tonight, I will have their approval, and we should be fine. Second thing I want to mention is I've already spoken with Don Schneider. They are fine withholding these costs. This project cannot happen this year. It will happen in the spring, so this will be a carryover for both of these. Both the driveway and Amy Lane will be carryovers. That's pretty much all I have. I do recommend approval, and I am welcome to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from the board?
Questions.
Alderman Rucker.
Amy, Amy Lane, do we have all the documentation in place to have that turned over to the city?
I believe that there are still a couple of outstanding easements, but it's really kind of a technicality. We had all of the easements in place, and there was a law change with the county that says that marital status must be listed on the easement. So we're in the process of going back to the owners to re-sign a lot of these easements. I am not sure if, so we've got two. Tara says we have two.
No, I only have, I only need two more.
You only need two more. So with, with this project not kicking off until the spring and them already signing the easement once, I really don't see that there's going to be a problem there, Alderman Rucker.
Do we anticipate that before the next reading?
I'll try very hard, even if I have to go to their house.
I would hate to award the contract and then, and then not be able to.
I'll get it done before next reading.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion approved.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rose, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first reading passes. Next item of business, we have Bill 22-85, it's an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance 19.55 Nagler, am I saying that Nagler?
Nagler.
Nagler, thank you. Nagler Aviation Fuel Contract to Increase a Yearly Not-To-Exceed Amount of $250,000 per Year for Revised Total Yearly Not-To-Exceed $1,150,000 per Year for Fuel Purchases from Nagler. Did I say it right that time?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Nagler Oil Company Incorporated. This is the first and second reading. Ty Dinsdale, Airport Manager, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is Nagler Fuel Contract, take two. At the previous board meeting, I was just to practice on that run. I had a motion instead of an ordinance to change an ordinance, so you've read this two or three times already. We, we are in need to raise our not-to-exceed limit on the contract we have with Nagler Fuel, just because of fuel sales have been up and the price of fuel's been up naturally, so we need to raise our not-to-exceed limit for the contract. And this agenda item will raise that amount by $250,000 per year and not-to-exceed a total of $1,150,000 for the purchase of fuel from Nagler for the year. Airport recommends approval.
All right, thank you very much. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion approved.
I'm sorry, I thought you had a question.
Nope.
All right, we have a motion, a motion by Alderman Osteen. Do I have a second? Alderman Schuman, my apologies, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to do this again now. Second reading, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance 19.55 Nagler Aviation Fuel Contract to Increase a Yearly Not-To-Exceed Amount of $250,000 per Year for Revised Total Yearly Not-To-Exceed $1,150,000 per Year for Fuel Purchases from Nagler Oil Company Incorporated. Do I have a motion, or do I have any comments or questions for second reading? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Still move.
Alderman Rose, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, roll call, please.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Rose.
Yes.
Alderman Schuman.
Yes.
Alderman Becker, or I mean Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
All right, second reading passes. Next item for business is 22-86, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed and three easement deeds needed for the Gulfview Lane to Seabreeze Drive Waterloop Project. First reading, Assistant City Administrator Mike Welty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. And for the record, I do apologize, it is not a quick claim deed, it is a quit claim deed. I was educated before the meeting by our city planner, Quaid Sternly, and I do apologize for that mistake.
Well, education for me, too.
Cochrane Engineering has been working through easement issues with the Gulfview, the Seabreeze Drive Waterloop Project that we're currently budgeted for in 2022. If this is approved, this property swap will go a long way towards getting, making this project a reality, but I will tell you, there's one other easement negotiation that we're still dealing with that I may have to bring to the board at a later date. Because of all these issues, this project will be carried over until 2023. There are three easements that are needed from Antler Ridge Trading Company before we can move forward. They are asking for a small piece of property, and if you look in your packets on page 74, you will see a map of where the old muff tower used to be located. This was a tower that we took over and then dismantled when we took water through the Woodland Cove subdivision. And what remains is essentially the piece of ground that that tower used to live on. That tower is landlocked, that land is landlocked and surrounded completely by property already owned by Antler Ridge. I did not get this property appraised, but I did use some, some other residential property appraisements that we have had recently to kind of come up with a rough estimate of it. But again, the property is landlocked, there's, if I tried to sell it on the open market, there's no way I would get, you know, the value that is listed there. And frankly, the project can't happen. It, the project dies if I don't get the easements I need to kind of go through their property. So they, they want that little box, that little yellow box that you see on page 74, and they're willing to give us those three easements in exchange for it. That property has no true value to the city whatsoever. There are two of the three easements that you see here are easements that we need to go through that property. The other easement is an easement that we need to go through another section of their property where we're going to be taking the water loop through. So I recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Mike. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Schuman, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first reading passes. Next, we have 20, Bill 22-87, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 21.78, adopting the 2022 annual budget transfer of funds necessary expenditures for airport fuel. This is the first and second reading. City Administrator Gina Woods, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board, this budget amendment request follows Ty's contract amendment. It amends fiscal year 2022 to mirror what we're estimating to end the year, both the expense side as well as the revenue side.
All right, comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rucker.
The ordinance is correct and the blue sheet is not. Is that a fair statement?
Oh, well, let's see.
The blue statement says $50,000, the ordinance says $650,000.
Oh, yes, the ordinance is correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? If not, do I have a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first reading passes. Second reading, ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 21.78, adopting the 2022 annual budget transfer of funds for necessary expenditures for airport fuel. This is the second reading. Any further comments or questions? If not, Alderman Osteen. I do have one question for Gina. I'm not sure if this happened or not. Were these corrections or amendments included in the budgets we had for 2022?
Yes. So the budget draft that you guys have been reviewing the last few days did include these estimates to year-end. It's just now officially amending the budget.
So, so.
It doesn't change your cash flow by.
Expenses plus revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, that's all. Very good. All right, do I have a motion to approve second? Do I have a motion to approve second reading? Sorry, folks. Alderman Rose, do I have a second?
Still move.
I'll second.
All right, Alderman Becker, roll call, please.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Schuman.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
All right, second reading passes. Bill 22-88, ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter 150 in the municipal code establishing new 45-day notice deadlines with the process for the city's consideration of development plans and tax abatement pursuant to the Urban Redevelopment Corporation's Law, Chapter 353 of the revised state statutes of Missouri. This is the first reading. City Attorney Ed Rucker, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I could make that title longer if you'd like.
No worries, it's only, only one reading.
This ordinance was requested and suggested by Alderman Ross. What it does is it sets the same 45-day notice time period for mailing notices on Chapter 353 projects when we're going to do tax abatements as we have with a chapter, with a tax increment financing under, under Chapter 99. The state statute itself, 353, requires only that the process proceed pursuant to a local ordinance. It does not say what that local ordinance needs to contain. Currently, your local ordinance contains a 15-day mailing notice. We have, we give three kinds of notices. We give a notice to any property involved in the area that is not obviously a petitioner to the, to the project. In other words, someone who is not part of the economic development project but whose property will be affected. We give a notice to all the taxing districts, and then we publish a notice. What this ordinance will do is it will set a 45-day mailing notice to property owners who are not petitioners. It will set a 45-day notice procedure for affected taxing districts. It will keep the same 15 days for publication. Frankly, I believe honestly that publishing more than 15 days before the hearing isn't going to do a darn bit worth of good. People are going to forget it was there. It also makes one other technical change. It requires that the public hearing happen before the first reading of the Chapter 353 notices. It kind of cleans up our process, it makes it more consistent with what we've done in terms of tax increment financing, and otherwise, it's well within your legislative discretion in terms of how you want to handle it.
Very good, thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Osteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first reading passes. Last item of business is for discussion. It's Osage Beach Private Road Assessment. City Administrator, Assistant City Administrator Mike Welty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. At the 8-4 Board of Aldermen meeting, we had discussed, we had a discussion related to prioritizing the assessment of private roads within Osage Beach. At that time, Alderman Osteen had asked us to go to the county, check, check the records, and come back with whatever road agreements we could find for the, for the roads that are listed on the priority list, which is page 88 of your packet. Well, and Dave is here, and after I'm done, he can speak to any of those, any of those road agreements that are in there, but the bottom line is, is that we didn't really find much in there. There's, there's not a lot of direction that's provided for those private roads and how the associations handle them from a private standpoint. What I'm trying to do is come up with a process that will guide the city through how we prioritize these roads and decide which roads to work with the Special Road District to bring up the city guidelines, or as close as we can to city guidelines, to eventually bring them into city inventory. Just a couple of things that I want to mention, and I know that Alderman Ross is not exactly on the same page with me on this, but, you know, some of the things that I think need to come into play here is how much buy-in do the residents on that road have for that? And that doesn't necessarily need to be monetary buy-in. And what I mean by that is there are a lot of times where we will get almost to the end, Ledges is a good example, we've already invested a lot of engineering money on things, and then they all fall apart. So when I say that there needs to be a vested interest by the residents, I also mean that maybe one of those residents on those roads take it upon themselves to go to all the residents, make sure that they're going to be on board with it, so that when we do go around and go and gather easements and go through all that, we're not road-blocked or we don't end up with spending money and then going nowhere like what appears is going to happen with Ledges. So the other thing I'd like to do is, is kind of take a fresh look at this list. There are other roads that have come up even tonight that may need to be added to this list, and, and there are so many roads on this list that we've already done. And so I'd like the opportunity to work with Ron and his, and his crew with the Special Road District to kind of reevaluate the roads, see if those priorities have changed using the methodology that was already established by Alderman Ross and our former engineer, and just kind of take a fresh look at it and work, try to work through that process and get a better process in place. So that's all I have. I'm open for any comments or discussions.
All right, board comments. Alderman Rucker.
Yes, I would like to take this time. I've done a lot of thinking on this. Mitch, would you please help me? Please, come here. Can you?
Head amount?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a, we don't have a good process, first of all, and we need to have a process, and I took the time to lay out what I think could be the, the foundation for a good process for us to, to utilize. I went through the process as a citizen a number of years ago when my road in my subdivision, we turned it over to the city. And it was very, very easy to do, and, and it didn't have any complications. But let me go through it and just kind of outline it, if you will. The first thing that needs to happen is the homeowners, and if you'll look at these items, on the right side, it says, "Who's responsibility?" There needs to be a road plat provided, something all owners, showing all the owners and, and the right-of-way. There needs to be that, that plot, and that's the responsibility of homeowners to bring that forth. We had to do that as, as a homeowner years ago, and that needs to come. I believe we need to have some kind of a documentation that shows at least 60%, if not 90% of the homeowners that are buying into this process and want us to move forward to spend the time and the energy to bring this road into inventory of, of the city. We need to have a list of all the property owners and the addresses, not only those that have signed a, just a basic petition thing or a basic thing, but we need to know who all the owners are. And I think that, that's the homeowner's responsibility to pick up that ball and, and to carry that ball and to, and to do all that. Then, I believe it's the city's engineer or the city's responsibility to develop an estimate cost and an engineering cost. That can be, you know, depending on the road and, and what that cost is going to be, we need to know what that cost is so that, so that we can move forward in, in, in the process. Then, that needs to be presented to the board. A list of a non-conforming specifications needs to be, as we know, we have specifications, and if the road meets the city's specifications, it's a no-brainer, it comes right in. But if it's not the proper width, not the proper composition, if there's some of these things that aren't there, we of the board have said that, you know, we are willing to listen to that. Now, the staff can, can, can avoid or can not bring it to. Now, the staff can avoid or can not bring it to the board if it meets all the specifications and go straight to the approval process. But if it doesn't meet that, it needs to come to us. We need to know, I think at that stage, what it is that this road doesn't meet our specifications so that we don't have all kinds of work being done and then find out later, well, no, we're not willing to bend on that width or whatever it may be. So I think at that time, the board needs to be, like I said, given a list of those things by the city engineer or somebody within the city staff so we can determine what we're willing to bend and not. Then, the board gives a tentative approval, whether they're approving or denying the road based on that information. And I'm sure the staff will want to tweak this out. The next thing is construction cost estimates. We need to know what those construction cost estimates are and what right-of-ways that we might need. That needs to be shared with the owners as well as the board, that the responsibility of construction costs and the responsibility of right-of-ways is 100% their responsibilities. We are taking on the cost of engineering if there's some work can be done, and we've done that all along. Now, our engineering cost is a little bit more than what it used to be since we're not doing engineering in-house. So, but we have taken that on. And so, they also need to be aware that the price may change after the bid process because that's always a possibility. Now, where they get their funding from, as we know, that's up to them, whatever the funding is. We know the special road district's out there, but we don't speak for the road district. We can't make the road district's policies. What the road district pays and whether it's 100% or 90% or 80% and what the homeowners pay, that is not, I don't believe that's our responsibility to do anything with the road district. If they want to tag in some information here, they can, but that's the reason it's 100% is what the city is looking for. Then, 100% of the property owners sign off on whatever legal documents our council knows that we have to have after we've received the bids and we know what the pricing is. Some kind of a funding arrangement we signed off on for 100% of the estimated cost, and if needed, you know, then that may have to change if the estimated cost and the bid cost came in different. The road specs and documentation are prepared by us, by the city engineer. It's bid it out. The signed documents for 100% of the construction bid is needed. The city accepts the street officially, and then the construction starts after we've accepted. This is the process I believe we've been through. I could give you all kinds of war stories on why we've had some problems in the past, but we've worked on streets, had people working on them that were not part of the city's inventory, and there's been some concerns about, do we have the right to give that contractor the right to work on a private street? So, from what I've talked and had conversations with our counsel, legal counsel, this should alleviate any of those legal concerns. It also should alleviate some of the issues we've had with the ledges, and I'm sure there may be some things that might be needed to be added. But this is a framework that I put together that I think gives us something to provide to staff so that they can move forward with this process. So, there it is. Pick it out, tear it up, do whatever you think we need to do with it, but that's square one for me. Thank you.
All right. Real quick. Yes, Gina and Mike Welty had a couple of things, if you don't mind.
Chapter 510-10 is our current guidelines for consideration accepting private roads into public system road system? Road system? Yep, that's the title. Anyway, currently, they have like 95%. So, if I understand that correct, take this and adapt changes or modifications to our current section that outlines how to do that?
And if the 95%, I didn't know. I was more looking at the nuts of bolt and how it would be, but if it's 95%, is that the first process, Gina?
Yeah, it kind of outlines the guidelines among other things. It doesn't, yeah.
I'm good.
But right now, it does say 95% of the property owners adjacent to the street to be transferred, da-da-da, and there's a form, and we do kind of have a process, but you're right, over time, we've found gaps. So, I just want to make sure that you understand there is already a section, so it's got started, but how we want to amend it.
And I don't know if this has to be in the ordinance as such. This is more or less just discussion tonight. While for the staff to kind of be able to use.
Yeah, but there are some of that that could add to it.
Mike Welty?
Yeah, I just had two comments, and I was going to bring up the same thing that Gina did about the 95%, but in my mind, 95% is not good enough. 95% got us to ledges because that was one resident that I think it should be 100%. I think if we're going to move forward, we have to have 100% buy-in from every resident on the road because if one resident doesn't give you an easement, then you're done.
Well, I understand with Mike, but the only reason I felt 95% at the very beginning is because it's going to be difficult for some people to make, to be 100% buy-in when they don't know what kind of money they got to come up with. That's the only thing. And I, but I understand where you're at, and I struggled with that as well, and that's why I ended up putting that 90%, which 95 at the very beginning is good, but before we start spending some money, you know, I put that we'd have to have 100%. And at that point, once we have the rough estimate, and you can go back to those homeowners folks and say, "Look, we're talking X number of dollars," then at that point, they can figure out where they're going to get that money from, how much that money is, whether they take it out of their own pocket, and at that point, I would be willing to ask them to sign on deadline. But early on, that's-
Well, at that point, all we're-
I don't know how we take care of that problem, but that's-
At that point, all we're at is the cost of the estimate.
Yes.
And so, that would be acceptable. And then I do have one other question for you, Alderman Rucker. I would have switched 13 and 14. Why do you have it the way you have it? I would have, the road acceptance should be the last thing that we do after the road meets all of our-
I put it this way because of our attorney.
That was one heck of a night we had, wasn't it?
Do you recall our discussion?
Not particularly.
Okay. The reason I did it, unless I misunderstood him, is he, we found out that we were awarding a bid to work on a street that we did not own. And we did not have the owners, you know, and we were awarding the bid. So there was some concern about sovereign immunity. There was concern about us, our legal situation, and he, I understood him, and maybe I misunderstood you wrong, Ed, but I understood that he felt it was much cleaner, much better for us to accept the street so that during construction, we owned it and if there was any legal situation or any problems, contract or stuff. That's what I thought I understood.
Right. If we're spending, precisely, premised on the idea we're spending our money on this, okay, that we're spending your money on. One of the, the way Mike recalls it, if I'm following what he's talking about, traditionally, we've, the special road district has rebuilt the street up to city standards, and then we brought it in when it got to city standards. Okay? I think you're almost looking at having two different processes here, a process for special road district helping out, okay, in which case that can get done and we can bring in a street that's done and is now up to standard, and a process such as what you've described here where it looks like you're going to have the property owners paying to have it brought up to standard, and they're going to be paying us back, if I'm tracking that 100%.
No, I don't think it makes any difference, Ed, whether the homeowners pay for it or the road district pays for it or wherever they get their money, because we, in both situations, we are the ones that are doing the contract. We are the ones that are doing contract administration. We're the ones that are letting the bids, we're writing the specs. Wouldn't our liability be the same? Because even if the road district is doing the project, we are paying the bill. They just reimburse us later, so we're paying the bill. We're signing the contract. So, I thought that was the biggest concern. We're saying, "Do work on a road that we don't own."
Well, I think it's a little bit more complicated than that because I think there's a third option because I think this could and will happen, and that is a special road district improves the road themselves without our help and then comes to us to turn it over.
That's never happened in the past.
It's going to happen sometime in the next 10 months. So, I guess that'll be the first time, but it's going to happen.
They're going to do everything without our engineering, without our construction, without none of that?
Yes.
Well, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a private road. You know, it doesn't have to be something that is constructed all the way to our design guideline. I would say that if I were going to spitball and guess on what Mr. Welty is talking about, it is the resurfacing of half of Gable Circle. The basics of it is, is you've got Gable Circle. Whenever they took half of it, they didn't take the other half or the owners didn't want to give it up, and now the one gentleman that was there at that time is no longer there, and the road district is going in, putting down a new surface that will be, that will match what the city surface is, and then I believe if the owners want to come to the city and ask them to take over the remainder of Gable Circle. That is a road project that is not a complete remodel. It is just a resurfacing of the existing road that they are putting a matching surface, if not better than what the city has on the other half of Gable Circle, and are going to ask the city to take the rest of it because the city does use it quite a bit. Obviously, I will tell you, I live on that road, and our guys plow it simply so they can get down to the portion of the road that is ours and plow it and then back out. So-
Those kind of provisions can be put in there, though. I don't think that's anything that is insurmountable or anything, but I just wanted to point out that there are some unique situations out there that I think we need to make sure that we build into whatever process we have so that we have the flexibility.
And these are just guidelines here. I'm not wanting this to be a part of ordinance. These are just the guidelines.
Absolutely.
Alderman Becker, did you have something?
I did, but Mike brought it up. I would think we would want 100% buy-in from the owners before we spend a nickel. That's just my two cents.
Could I?
Certainly.
Carrie, do you care to use the microphone for online guests?
Yeah, I forget that they're all the way over here. So, I've forgotten a little bit over the time that I've been here, and I don't handle this like I used to, but I believe the 95% is something that is within the state statute that requires that the city get 95% of the owners to agree, and if you have 5% that do not, then the 95% number is what the city can then have to go ahead, and if they decide to condemn the remaining portion, they can condemn it. So, the 95% is not just a number that we came up with. It is actually a legal point of right number that says we have to get to a minimum of 95% before we can kind of forcibly, along with the 95%, go in and take over a road without a property owner's consent that owns property fronting that road. We've never done that, by the way. We have always gotten 100% since I've been here, anyway, to do so, and, you know, obviously, if you can get 100%, that is a much easier road to hoe than trying to condemn somebody.
Pardon the pun. So, pardon the pun, right? Pardon the pun? Road to hoe?
Right, okay, no, I did these one. Do that on purpose. Thanks for catching that, Mitch.
How much of questions over here? Alderman Osteen?
I did. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Welty for providing us with information I had requested previously regarding ownership, recorded road maintenance agreements, et cetera. A lot of that reasoning was it goes back to, as we prioritize these roads that we're wanting to basically take into our city inventory, it goes back to, number one, motivation for those homeowners, especially if there's costs incurred that are going to be basically transferred to them. We're more likely to get basically homeowners to agree to the city taking over a private street if there is no recorded road agreement. Therefore, no one's legally maintaining that road. There is no agreement. Basically, it's just going into disrepair. They're more likely to say, yes, let the city take that over, as opposed to roads that do have a road maintenance agreement that is recorded, which basically those homeowners are buying in or paying a certain amount per year to maintain that road. And if that dollar amount is obviously a lot less than any cost they're going to incur by turning the road over to the city, they're probably going to say, no, we're going to stay with what we've got because we are just fine with paying my $50 or $100 a month for patching some asphalt or leveling, grading some gravel or snow plowing, et cetera. That's the whole reason I wanted to see who actually had road agreements that were recorded because I believe those homeowners, it's going to be tough for us to basically try to take into the city inventory, with the exception of these individuals here because they are coming to us saying, "We want you to take this over, please." So, thank you for providing this information because I think as we prioritize these roads, I think those that have recorded maintenance agreements may be lower on the list because they already have something in force to maintain those roads.
Good point.
All right. Any other board members have a? Alderman Ross?
First of all, I appreciate Mike taking lead on this. At one point in time, I kind of thought all that work got forgotten about, so it's nice to see that it's still out there and live. I think a couple of things. One, as I read through this, it's almost like, how would I say, we're leading the process. I always felt like the road district led the process and that we assisted, and I still think that's a better model, okay? Now, if the road district thinks this is the best model, fine, albeit it's your all's money, I agree with that. The one point of discussion that I want to address with Mike where we didn't agree was, is we were talking, Mike was talking, and he said that, you know, some of the options he was discussing was is that the owners of the property share in the cost, and assuming that it was coming to the city, because there's other ways that the road district might do things, and that's up to them if it's not coming to the city, but I was adamant against. And the reason is, is they pay their taxes. I mean, we all pay, those of us that live in Osage Beach pay road district taxes. I think I pay, I'm trying to remember what I saw on my tax bill, but I think it's like 75 bucks or something. I don't remember what it is. Okay? Been paying it for 20 years, okay? And so, why do they need to pay more? That's always been my contention, and if we have a distinct partnership with them in helping out the road district, then that's my, because that was the only point of contention that I generally had, but I just wanted to explain that. I guess we have to decide, are we helping them out or are they helping us out? I'm not sure. What I will say about getting all of the signatures of the owners, one of the challenges with Clearwood Circle, which is what drove all of this to start with, after living there and watching that gravel road for 20 years, right above Greenwood Circle where I live, and there's some folks that have lived on that. There's two people right now that have lived there longer than I have, put up with that road. It's a gravel road. Drives me crazy to see people in Osage Beach with a half-cent sales tax for transportation driving on gravel roads, okay? But the challenge is this, they drive on a gravel road, but that may not be where it's platted, okay? And so, the first thing that they say is, sure, I want a paved road. And then they go, well, where's the road going to be? And, well, we got this piece of paper, and we got, we looked down this road where there's some gravel, and they may not match up. And so, we need to recognize that, and I'm not talking about spending a lot of money, but I think the one thing that it helped, and the last time I was at the Osage Beach Road District meeting, I talked, Mike was there, if we could somehow figure out how to do a survey and put some flags out there and then let them see where their road's going to be, because I believe on Clearwood Circle, there's at least a 50/50 possibility that somebody's going to say, yeah, I want a paved road, and their parking that they usually use is going to be significantly affected, but they won't know that until they see some survey flags. And so, however we want to go about this process, and Mike, you know, Kevin, I don't know if you worked with the road district for this, or, I mean, Darla works for them, maybe you and her worked on this, it doesn't matter. I don't have a problem with that. I think that, to your point about a process, we need a more clarified process. I do agree with Mike, though. I'm not okay, with or without Ed's comments, I'm not okay with taking over a road until we're certain that it meets our standards. That's the one basic reason for the road district is, is that they help these people get their roads to our standards, okay? So I don't want to take the road over until it's done, okay? And it is done to our standards. Now, if it's designed and we project managed it and so on and so forth, that's our share of the partnership, great, and naturally, it will meet our standards, but that should be the last part of the process.
Alderman Ross, when you say meet our standards, are you implying that you think that every road should meet our exact design guidelines standards, or are you just simply stating-
No, there are variations. As I last recall, when we dug into this four years ago or something, and had probably a couple too many beers and slept too many times, remember all of that, but at the end of the day, there was some, there were some ways that we, Rin Lane, for example, Rin Lane doesn't meet our new design guideline standards, but we accepted it because there is a process in those guidelines to do that. So, no, that's not what I meant.
You're, I think what I was thinking you were making was either meet our standards or what we've accepted because we agreed that we would-
In my mind, we have two sets of standards. We have a set of standards or guidelines for new construction, okay? And then we have a set of standards for bringing in private streets.
No. No.
Well, he's shaking his head yes, and you're shaking your head no. So, you guys might want to talk. Yes, that's how Rin Lane does not meet, Rin Lane does not meet.
Well, I think number five on Alderman Rucker's list basically solves that problem. So, we present the board with the list of the non-conforming specifications with the particular road, and then you've got that, you've got that. And we've got buy-in from the Board of Aldermen in advance of moving forward. Couple other comments for Alderman Ross. I look at the partnership with Special Road District as a collaboration. I think sometimes we lead it, and I think sometimes they lead it. So, I'm not really interested in saying that either leads. I think it's more of a collaboration and a partnership.
Absolutely.
And so, I know that, one other thing I want to share with you, Alderman Ross, is I know from talking with Mrs. Rucker earlier in the week that the Special Road District already asks, they already ask, when somebody comes to them and wants to turn over a road, one of the first things they do is they ask if there is any, if they can assist. And sometimes they get as much as 10%. If they can't get 10%, sometimes they get 5%. And if they feel that there is a financial issue with the people on the road, sometimes they don't ask for anything. So, I didn't know if you were aware of that. I wanted to make sure that you were, sir.
That's not the way it was explained to me the last time I was at the meeting, but they had two different programs. So, in the end, all, you know, again, I do agree that it's the Road District's money. And I'm not trying to tell the Road District how to do things. But here's the challenge. When you have eight or 10 people on a road, and you need eight or 10 people to agree at the same point in time, and money's involved, and everyone's got to come up with $2,000 or $3,000 or $4,000 all at the same time, you know, I'm not even sure why you start the process, because it ain't going to happen. Now, if it does, you know, I want to stand there and thank every one of them. But I've seen it happen too many times where it didn't. That was always the one that killed the goose, was is, oh, we got one or two people that can't, they're not going to come up with the money, and they can, then, that's how Clearwood Lane is still sitting there. Clearwood Lane was worked on back in 2008 or 2010. And seven or eight people were owners on that road, and five or six might have been interested, and two or three weren't. And so, it just sits there as a gravel road. And my whole goal is, at the beginning, the original objective is, let's get people on paved roads so that they're snowplowed, and that they're taken care of. We, you know, there's been a lot of money spent in this city for roads, and we continue to have a transportation tax. And if we can help by helping the Road District, who has limited resources, and a bunch of, and three gentlemen that, God love them for all they do, and they've got Darla there, who probably works very cheaply, I would guess, have limited resources, and we have the resources in engineering and so forth, and we end up helping these folks out that are our residents get their roads paved and maintained, then I completely agree with you. It's a partnership. How best to do the partnership? I don't have all the answers. But the one thing I'm, two things I'm sure of is, is that if we can figure out a way to demonstrate to them what they're signing up for, it will be easier to get alignment, okay? And make sure that it doesn't fall apart in the end. And the second thing is, is that I don't think that we should accept it until our engineer, public works, you know, yourself, whoever, is sure that it meets our standards and we're okay with it. Unless we're going to make an exception in the board, and we can always make exceptions. That's all I have.
Anyone else? I would just like to say that I could tell you back in 1999, the process works where the people in the subdivision fess up with money. Because that's what happened in my subdivision. We ended up with a road that needed some lots of repair, and we ended up with about $20,000 worth of work that needed to be done. We spent, and we spent all of it, or we took care of all of it. We had some people within our subdivision that couldn't come up with the money. And we, as an association, went out and got a loan, and they ended up paying us back. There's also another avenue, which is CIDs? NIDs, there are all these, these, NIDs, there's NIDs, where these people can create a taxing district of their own, depending if they don't have the money to come up with it. So, there's some other ways for them. And it's a philosophy of, that I know you and I have had a discussion on. And I don't, I feel that they do need to have a buy-in, but it's not the city's responsibility to make that determination. That's why I didn't put that in here. If this, if the city is going to, you know, we are contributing some towards the engineering. But they chose to buy that street, or that house with a street that wasn't a paved street. And so, they need to bring that street up to the paved portion of it. So, I think that that's, again, that's something between them and the Road District are however they want to get their funding. Yes, sir.
Can I?
Yes, please, Carrie.
Okay. So, I've been involved in this process, you know, for a long time. And I think I go back all the way to where the first one that I handled was Ash Lane. And when Alderman Ross said, well, I'm not real clear, not real clear who takes the lead in this issue, what I would say from the city's perspective is, is that the actual property owners who want their street taken in are the ones that take the lead and always have, okay? So, you know, when they come in and, like these folks here, you know, in typical, these folks wouldn't necessarily come to a board meeting if they would have, you know, back in a certain time called in. If they would have got ahold of me or the city engineer, we would have sat down and talked to them and let them through this process. And basically, the first thing that starts out with is that the city engineer and the Public Works Director would go out, look at the situation as it pertained to the street. Our code for allowing us to take in a road states, basically, that it must meet our design guidelines, or it can meet a state of repair that is approved by the Board of Aldermen upon the recommendation of the city engineer. Now, I want to say it was Alderman Ross's first or second year working with Nick. You all went in, and there was a change made in the design guidelines as it pertains to taking in existing streets. Dave's trying to find that for me right now. And I'm sorry, because I'm not as involved as I once was. But as it pertains to the Special Road District, when I got here, up until probably 2010, they were not nearly as involved in reconstructing roads as they are now. So, Alderman Rucker's contention that initially the financial burden of bringing the road up to a specific state of repair was on the homeowners of the subdivision themselves. And then, at a certain point, the Special Road District had an amount of money that they wanted to really start investing back into the community. And then, what happened at that point was our city engineers, anytime somebody came in and wanted to do something with the road, or if we came upon a road that was an issue, our city engineers would then start working with the public and that subdivision, and then get involved with the Special Road District to see if they were interested in redoing the project. So, at one point, it became kind of a, well, at a certain point, the public would have had to have come up with that money, but now the Special Road District is involved. Nick was especially involved in leading citizens to the Special Road District to have them do work, to get roads to a point of better repair. And what then started happening was the Special Road District, if they were going to put the money into repairing the road, they wanted to make sure that once they had put that money in, that the city was then going to take it and maintain the road, you know, at the point that it was repaired by the city, or by the Road District. So, you know, in that point, what the situation was then was getting the signatures of everybody who was involved, the property owners, along with a quitclaim deed for their right-of-way, that would then give the property to the city. And then, once the construction was started, whether the city did the engineering and then was going to ultimately do the inspections, at a certain point, obviously, then we would do the final inspection. And if it met the requirements of the plans that had been approved, whether it was plans that were approved to our design guidelines, or plans that were approved to a state of repair short of what our design guidelines by the board, the inspection, the final inspection was, did they get to the point of where we expected them to be by way of the board's approval of what we expect on the road? And then, at that point, basically, we already had the quitclaim deeds to make the property, you know, public right-of-way, and would write a letter of acceptance for the actual construction of the street.
Very informative. Alderman Ross?
So, just a couple of things. One, I know that things were done differently. Harbor Heights, Property Owners Association did something like you all did, Kevin. I don't know if there was any money chanted around, but I know that the city came in and they got ditches in order and different things like that so that the city would take the street over. I get that. Those, there was a lot of subdivisions that were set up with POAs, and they had those kind of resources. They had the ability to, you know, just like Gerald's would, to assess fees, okay? A lot of these that are left on here aren't. As far as who leads, I completely agree, and that's the way it's been at the Road District, and that's because that's been our process. You know, the Aldermen aren't coming up there and getting convinced on the Road District, which roads it do. Now, I have come up there with people who have said, hey, I'd like to do something with my road. And I say, here's what you have to do. And they say, will you come up there with me? And I did. People at Amy Lane, I came up there with, I happen to know them. But it's still, without some owners being involved, the Road District isn't listening, okay? The owners have to be involved. And so, I agree with that. The question is, once they ask for help, who's taking the lead? And that's what I was referring to. What I know is this, we've got, you know, you've got a page in front of you that was the worst roads. There were some others that were on a priority, but it didn't matter because we were 15 deep on this page, and there's still five or six roads on here with gravel roads. And, you know, if we don't care that people in the city of Osage Beach that might want some help are driving on gravel roads, so be it. We can say they need to pay this, or we're not going to do this, or they got to follow this process, or whatever. I would just like to see everybody be able to drive on a paved road and have snowplow, to tell you the truth. I just think that, you know, the land values that we have with a $36 million budget or something like that that we're proposing every year, somehow, over time, we can figure out how to get most of these roads that are gravel roads, if people are willing, and I understand they have to be willing. I understand that, okay? Many of them don't know how. Many of them don't have any idea, okay? And, you know, they're, just fact of life, that's just the way people are. But if they'd like to help, then I'd love to be able to figure out how to help them. And I'd like to make the process easier than harder. And I'll just say it that way and leave it alone. That's all I got.
Alderman Osteen?
I've just got one comment. I'm not sure what the end result of this discussion is supposed to be, but I think first and foremost, before we move beyond the legalities, before we move beyond the cost, et cetera, we need to go back to the homeowners of these roads and figure out their involvement, their buy-in on this whole process. Because half of what we may be discussing here is part of what we are prioritizing on private roads. Those homeowners may say, we want nothing to do with it. So, I think first and foremost, we need to go to all the homeowners on these roads on this list and find out if they are open to this discussion, to find out if they are open for us to do this before we spend more time and effort basically prioritizing roads that may not be part of our list when all is said and done. Everybody agree with that? Because I believe that there are going to be, some of these homeowners are going to say, we want nothing to do with it.
May, maybe we take it two or three roads at a time rather than all at once, but I don't disagree. But rather than, because it could be, some of these roads on the bottom of the list, it could be 2030, 2035 before we get to them. But I think we need to do that as, you know, for the ones that we have as our top priorities, you know, as ones that we see on near-future budgets.
Alderman Ross, did you have something?
Well, I was just going to just add a little more so of what Alderman Osteen had commented. Obviously, there's, as it was already commented, that there's many of our roads that started from the beginning, and the right-of-way, as he said, could be a parking lot, or could be part of their yard. I mean, they have no idea. All they know is that this is a road, and I want it paved. But once they see, and like you say, flag it or whatever of, you know, where they should be, then, well, you're not going to do that to me, I'm sorry. Well, this is good, just like you say, in the process. And that would be the beginning before we ever, ever money's even spent.
Alderman Tuman?
So, with hearing a lot of this, the one thing I'm thinking about, too, is we do have our priorities on what roads we want to change over and everything. But I kind of wonder if we should do some kind of, the only word that comes to my mind is promotion, which is not the right word, but a push out there to the public to see, hey, did you know the city offers the chance to take over your roads? If, if you are interested, contact the city, kind of get more. There's probably a lot of people out there that don't even realize that the city can take over private roads. And that would kind of give the citizens a chance to come to us and say, hey, we didn't realize this is an option. We are very interested. So, I understand sometimes the priority is who has the most houses, or how bad it is. But also, if the citizens are the ones that are involved in it and bringing it forward, those would be the ones maybe to go to first, because we know that we're going to have a lot more of them agree to do it if they are the ones coming to us. But there's probably a lot of people out there that don't realize they can come to us for that. Especially with all the influx of people that we've had and the changeover of housing and everything. I mean, I know it would be not necessarily a, hey, if you come to us, we will do this, but maybe just make it a little more known that that's something the city does. Yeah, thank you. I could not come up with anything but the word promotion, and I'm like, it's not right.
Be cautious on what it could cost us.
Yes.
I think Carrie Patterson, you had insight on that?
I guess the only thing that I would say, and this is just a final question, knowing how this works, is if you go to do that and go out and start talking to them, the expectation from them is that the city is paying for some, if not all, of what needs to happen to the road, okay? If you go out and say, hey, we're taking in roads, you know, you either need to, you either need to be prepared to take them as they are, or offer some kind of, we're putting money into these because we're the ones going out here promoting this. Like, because this is what was done in 1985, I believe. The city basically sent out a letter that says, come one and they call. I know that Alderman Rucker, since the day he got in here, he was the champion of, they should all be armed. And then, you know, I see all the things going on. But if we go to specific roads, specific, you know, subdivisions and say, hey, are you interested in giving your road? Their expectation is, is that the city is putting the money into taking it and taking it to a certain standard, or they're just going to take it as is.
I agree.
It's semantics, though. It's semantics, how you present it.
If we don't do it, that's what you, you know, the city will have to be very clear when we do that, just say, did you know we would take your road if it meets a certain standard? And if you're willing to, you know, help give that sticker one way or another.
That's one thing why I liked Gina's rewording of awareness campaign. I didn't necessarily mean the city go-to homeowners and subdivisions and everything. But, correct, I said I didn't necessarily mean that. However, if there was an awareness campaign of this, not necessarily come one, come all, you can, we'll take your road, but hey, if anybody is interested, we have steps, we have processes in place that could be, could help you go through these processes. I'm not saying that we would pay for everything, but just make it more known that it is an option for our citizens.
I guess I was approaching it from the perspective of Alderman Osteen's comments based on the specific roads that are on the list, okay? So, if we're going to start going to those specific roads, and the owners of those say, you're on our list of high priority, they're going to want to know, or if, you know, we throw out, it'll probably cost you $2,500 a house, you know, that is, that's a shock and awe for...
Yeah, I guess mine was more of a not going to the homeowners, just making it...
Well, mine was more of a go to the homeowners, because we've already, we've already pinpointed the roads that we want to take in the inventory. But it's all going to go back to the semantics on how we approach them. And once again, it's just gauging their interest. But once again, semantics is key, stating that the city is not paying for this 100%. But if you are interested in finding out more about this, at least give us that okay to move forward with some discussions. Because I said, that's the key point, is finding out who's even interested in doing this.
Right.
Well, a lot of good information tonight. This is discussion. Do we have a discussion or a suggestion on how to move forward? Alderman Rucker? Yes, I, Mike actually brought forth how to prioritize the roads. I took the opportunity to bring forth an area within this process that has been very near and dear to my heart, because we've had a problem with it specifically, the ledges. And that's the procedural. The procedural thing is something that I don't think the board needs to act on. I think the board had some suggestions. And I think that's staff to take that as far as procedural-wise and work that out. I mean, the... I mean, the, the, I don't think there needs to be a board action on that unless they want to do that. As far as the, the, the setting of, of which is the first priority of the street, and I think that is, that's a little more challenging. That, that's a summation of where I think.
Honestly, I think, although I think there's still some contention, I think I have enough direction now. And if, if the mayor and board are okay with this, what I'd like to do is take a closer look at the list that Alderman Rucker has put together, compare it to the way that the ordinance is laid out right now. And then at the same time, work over the winter with the special road district to kind of relook at the prioritization, maybe do some more research into what Alderman Schuman is alluding to. And then maybe come back sometime in the spring or in the summer next year, once, once I've kind of got everything together. And maybe we can either continue this discussion or I can bring you a draft ordinance changes or something of that nature. But I think ultimately, the discussion has been very helpful for me. I, I really appreciate it between Carrie and a lot of the board members. As you know, I've only been doing this for two or three years. So this has taught me a lot and I think I can go forward with this and at least come back with a few less things for you guys to argue about. And then maybe we can, maybe we can get somewhere once we get to that point. How does that sound, Mayor?
Any opposition from the board?
No.
All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Wiltie. Thank you, folks. And this will be the man we'll be visiting with, so. All right, we're going to move on now to the staff communications. We, you don't have to run off if you don't like, if you don't want to. City Administrator Gina Woods, please.
Well, you've heard a lot from me last week and a half, but I do want to thank you for your respect and commitment to the budget process. I know we're past the hardest point, at least on your guys' end. Next steps, I will have a discussion on the agenda for the next packet on some of those final line items that you're waiting on some information from me. Draft number two of the budget with all the updates and changes will be on the, or potentially will be on the first meeting in December, which is 12/1. We, it will be delivered in the packet the day before we leave for the Thanksgiving holiday. So I think that's, what is that, three weeks from tonight? Two weeks, three weeks from tonight? So anyway, that's kind of the next staff, uh, next steps. And that, that's it.
Can I ask a question about that?
Uh huh.
So the report backs that for, I thought there was going to be some discussion around payroll and.
At the next meeting, I'm going to show up at a discussion.
Oh, okay. If I miss that, I apologize.
Well, I might have talked fast. But yeah, the next meeting, which is the second meeting, and remember, we'll have some of those last-minute items. I'll have everything with the draft done because that next Wednesday, I'll get the draft two done.
Okay. All right, thank you. Assistant City Administrator, Mike Wiltie.
Yeah, I just have one thing to share with the board. My discussions with Dave Van Leer and Eric Howe, I think we're getting close to coming up with a permanent fix for sands. And I intend to bring that to the board before the end of the year for review, before I move any further. Because I want to make sure that, that the board understands what changes need to be made and, and will bless those changes before we bid that stuff out and kind of go forward with that. It will be along the lines of, of one of the items. It's already budgeted. We, we already put in the budget to replace a lot of the manholes down that road anyway. Obviously, that might change a little bit once we get the final things from, from Cochran. But I just want to make sure you know that, that that is still a high priority for us. And, and we do intend to bring it back to the board prior to kind of moving forward and kind of let you guys all look at it and, and, and discuss it for a moment. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. City Clerk Tara Barath.
Um, no, I don't have anything here. I've just been put out about, we put out over 700 contractor renewal licenses. So we've just been super busy.
Very good. City Treasurer Carrie Bell.
Oh, yeah, real quick, as we're kind of talking about. TIFs right now. I kind of want to bring the board's attention to, on the, on the back end of when you approve a TIF, there's three major report filings that are required by the state. One of which is the five-year public that Ed has taken care of more recently. There's an annual property tax debt service that is published in the paper annually. The third one is the one that if it is not done, can actually cause you problems in reviewing a new TIF. And that is required to be filed with the state by November 15th. I just want to let you know those, all five of those have been filed and I have confirmation numbers on those, two of which are final, both Pruitt's Point and Marie, the Hammond's project was, were final. So those will go away. You can find all of those reports online under the City Treasurer's Department. And it's kind of old information. It's a snapshot from January to December. And it's not, the deadline is November and they don't open up the portal till October. So it's kind of old information, but it's out there and available if anybody would like to look at that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. City Attorney Ed Rucker.
Well, nothing on the legal front, but, but two things personally. One, even though she's not here tonight, I'd like to recognize Cindy Lee for wonderful, wonderful years of service to the city. She will be missed. She will leave a big hole in our lineup. She has done a fabulous job as far as I'm concerned with all the times I've dealt with her from the legal side of the HR function. And, and her commitment to the city could not be questioned. So she will be missed greatly. And the second thing is just in terms of keeping morale up, we all got very lucky last week. Our economic development specialist apparently got a yes from Grace, so he's now engaged.
Very good, very good. Chief Davis.
Just remind everybody, we have the Veterans Day Parade Saturday. So the parkway will be closed, the traffic from 1:00 to about 2:30 for the parade, so. But come out and support all the veterans.
Very good. Building official Ron White.
I don't think Davis, sir.
Very good. City Planner Carrie Patterson.
That's for the group tonight, Mayor.
All right, Cindy's gone. Public Works, Kevin's not here, is he?
No.
All right. Michael Bean's not here. Airport Manager Ty Dennisdale, please.
Just real quick, I want to thank Mike and Gina and Tara for helping me out with all my agenda items. I do so many of these that I'm really getting good at it. Thank you.
We are getting good at it every time.
All right, Parks Manager Eric Gregory.
I have nothing, sir.
Cochran Engineering, Dave Van Leer.
Yeah, just a quick update on some of your projects. If you've been up and down the parkway, you'll see the, the two sidewalk jobs that we were doing are essentially complete. There is about 160-foot of railing that needs to go up along the sidewalk next to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. You'll see that part of the sidewalk is fenced off or coned off to try to keep pedestrians off of there. But those, other than that item, those two projects are essentially complete. We will be doing some final inspections on those projects here over the next few weeks. Also, the industrial drive project, I would estimate that at about 65% complete. Contractor has been making pretty decent progress. We've also done some coordination to ensure, try to minimize any issues with the Veterans Day Parade. They do use industrial drive to kind of staging of the floats. So we have been in contact with the contractor to try to minimize impact there. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Economic Development Specialist Mitchell Moon.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, Alderman Rucker.
Uh, yes, two items. One is, I know we've all been inundated with the Oasis Lakeport project. And I would just like to say, I would like to reach out to Mayor Oliveri and Mayor Lyons and thank them. Because both of them were involved in some conversations many years ago about project, this type of project and this, this thing. The, the wheel was something that I had someone come to me and I took that to Mayor Lyons and there was some discussion on that. And Mayor Oliveri, I know, has some discussion with some people as far as the, that process. And I also know, not by names, but I also know that a number of our staff has had conversations with people about that. I'm sure, number one, Mr. Patterson, that have had conversations. So this project is not, you know, it's not, it's far from being okayed and completed and okayed and on its way. But there's a lot of folks that have been doing and working on this stuff for many years. So it takes a long, long time for that. So we need to realize that there's a lot of folks prior to us that had a lot to do with this and, and hopefully, when it comes to completion. But I just wanted to acknowledge some of those folks. Secondly, is, I, I, there's, there's something in the paper again this week that, that has just irritates me. And so I, our, our President of Campus School Board is complaining that, that there wasn't proper notification done for the hearing. And I wish that she would understand that the notification she got was the day after the hearing that was not required. She got notification ahead of time of the required hearing. We had two public hearings for that specific project. We don't, we were only required to have one and that is the, the one that the school board was notified on. So we did properly notify them. The mayor, more than a few times, I heard him on the radio apologizing, and I don't believe he needed to do that because we did our proper notification to them. And he had reached out, I know, to try to do that. So I think the city has done, has really tried to make sure we notified everybody and we did notify them. And, and for them to specifically in the paper today, or yesterday, excuse me, say that we didn't do that and, and we voted on it after they were notified is not correct. So I just want to acknowledge that publicly and, and hope that folks are out there and listening and especially the newspaper people are listening, they will correct their information. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Schuman.
My main thing was going to be on the Veterans Day Parade, but Todd stole my thunder on that.
Sorry.
Sorry. And then just because we're not going to meet again until after Veterans Day, just thank you to all the veterans and especially their families as well because it does affect everybody. But thank you for your service and I hope everybody can make it out to the parade because we've been in it for the past several years. My kids love to go to it and be in it. We've heard a lot of people talking about it and it seems to get a little bigger over here. So we'd love to see everybody out there at it.
All right, thank you. Alderman Becker.
Just congratulations to Cindy. She was going to be missed.
All right, thank you. Alderman Osteen.
Okay, then.
Let me guess, you've got a few things.
Well, I, I had a topic I was hesitant to speak about. But, you know, I like to play devil's advocate sometimes. Kevin kind of talked about this on his comments he just made. And it goes back to some things I addressed before regarding the court of public opinion. In his comments regarding the school board and the preserved development, this kind of ties in with that. So here goes. I think it's important that we remind our citizens and the public that just because a developer issues a press release does not mean a development is a done deal. I have had several conversations in the past week with individuals asking me questions about the proposed development on Jeffrey's Drive. And their tone on this is that it is a done deal. In my mind, this development, as exciting as it sounds and as much as it would basically be a boon for the city of Osage Beach, this is just an idea. Nothing has been approved or passed through the city yet. There are many stages to approving a development such as this, which we need to remind the public about, including basically verifying whether this, this proposed development meets our standards or specifications for infrastructure regarding water or sewer or roadways. Or if or what dollar amounts, the developer's going to ask us for tax incentives. So there are many stages this has to still go through, yet people automatically are assuming because they've seen this in print media, on the radio, on television, that this is a done deal. We are far from basically being able to pull the trigger and promoting this development as a actuality. And I think it's important that we remind people of that, that once again, the court of public opinion in a lot of people's minds, it's a done deal. And if it doesn't move forward, well, basically, the city's going to be to blame. But once again, there are many issues and sides to this proposed development that could basically alter the proposed plan or basically deny it. So we shouldn't jump the gun at this stage. That's all.
All right, Alderman Marose.
Boy, you just busted my balloon.
Glad you followed him.
Yeah. I think more than anything, obviously, is, yes, Cindy, we are going to miss her and tomorrow will be a little reception for her. Also, I just want to commend our staff and our department managers and our administrators and city clerk of preparing and organizing the budget and the meetings and the three meetings, two meetings, whatever it was, seemed like 100. But anyway, just was well organized. And people just don't realize what they all go through. And yes, we're there as recipients of looking at all the figures and trying to decide what to do.